Good morning, we have a quorum. I called to order the morning meeting of the Special Finance Committee. The session will be from nine AM to twelve forty, there will be two sessions. The purpose of the Finance Committee is to examine the estimates, so make sure that the funds required do not exceed that is necessary for approved policies. If members wish to ask, members are reminded to ask questions directly related to the estimates. If you wish to ask follow-up questions on the government's written reply, please quote the reply serial number on the top right-hand corner of the question. If member is not able to ask follow-up questions today, you may ask questions in writing. Please submit that before the end of the meeting today to the secretariat. Now, this session is on transport and logistics. I will first invite Mr. Lam, the secretary, to say, to make some opening remarks. Mr. Lam, please. Chairman, the government has all along adopted the planning principles of infrastructure-led and capacity-creating to build a livable, competitive, and sustainable Hong Kong through driving development by transport infrastructure. We are also committed to promoting the development of aviation and logistics by capitalizing on our own unique advantages in terms of geographical location systems, economies, business in business and trade, with the beauty of enhancing the competitiveness of aviation, maritime, and logistics services industries. The government is taking forward the railway and major projects in the Hong Kong major transport infrastructure development blueprint that was promulgated in December last year in an orderly manner to enhance the connectivity between districts and unleash the development potential relevant areas. On local railway projects, the construction of the Tongchung Line Extension, Oyster Bay Station, Tsuen Moon South Extension and Northern Link NOL Phase One, Kuntong Station commenced in twenty twenty-three. The projects are expected to be completed progressively from twenty seventeen, twenty-seven onwards. The construction of Mi Hong Tsui Chiu Station and NOL Mainland is expected to commence in twenty twenty-four and twenty-five respectively. As for cross-boundary infrastructure, to further promote the connectivity and creation of the infrastructure in the Greater Bay Area and to jointly develop the GBA on the rail, this government in collaboration with Shenzhen authorities through the Task Force for Hong Kong Shenzhen Cooperation on Cross-Boundary Railway Infrastructure, will continue to pursue the two cross-boundary railway projects. That is the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Western Rail Link, Mihong Tsui Chiu Shanghai, and the NOL Spare Line. The second stage study of the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Western Rail Link is expected to be completed in mid-two thousand twenty-four. We are also following up on with the Shenzhen authorities on the implementation arrangement for the NOL Spare Line. The design is expected to commence in two thousand twenty-four. On road infrastructure, apart from the remaining construction works of Route Six, the government is also taking forward a series of major road projects in the northwest New Territories and other major road projects in the blueprint. In an orderly manner, we will implement the passenger railway system effectively to meet the logistic and transport needs of different districts. When, in addition to major transport infrastructure, the government plans to invite reference suppliers and operators express their interest, to submit the expressions of interest on the smart green shipment and smart transit system in Grieskau, Kaitai, Hongshui, and so on. And for aviation, Hong Kong International Airport continued to be the world's busiest cargo airport in two thousand twenty-three and achieved a slight year-on-year increase of three percent to four point three three million tons of cargo in two thousand twenty-three. We are confident that the Hong Kong IA can continue to keep this position. On the passenger side, daily passenger traffic and flight movements peaked at over hundred and sixty thousand passengers over one thousand aircraft. That's about eighty percent and ninety percent of the pre-pandemic levels. Leveraging the opportunities brought by the free one-way system to be commissioned by the end of this year, at a time with our country's support of the air Silk Road, we will focus on current major routes and routes along the Belt and Road of potential. Then, that's to strengthen aviation services between Hong Kong-related countries. There are routes spanning across Europe, Africa, South America, and Asia. To enhance the development of logistics and industries in the GBA, the Airport Authority continues to develop sea-air intermodal cargo transshipment. AA targets to complete the first phase construction of the permanent facility of the Hong Kong IA Logistics Park by the end of next year. The handling capacity will gradually increase to over one million tons per annum. Upon full operation, operating costs can be reduced by about half and cargo handling time can be saved by about a third. AA will actively seek to expand demand for air cargo services, including handling cold-chain cargo at its logistics park in Dongguan. It will collaborate with Chuhai to develop international cargo business. And we are committed to shaping Hong Kong IA into a green airport. AA commenced a study on sustainable aviation fuel in February this year. Recommendations will be made on the use and supply of SAF as policy, support, facilitation measures, improvement, and infrastructure improvements for government's consideration. The study is expected to be completed in the third quarter of this year. The government will, the government will make a reference to AA's report and make a forward-looking plan to set the direction for promoting the development of SAF. On our objective is to enhance the competitiveness of Hong Kong IA internationally and attract more flights to service between Hong Kong and the rest of the world by promoting the use of SAF in Hong Kong. Meanwhile, we completed the approval process for the second round of applications under the Labor Importation Scheme for the aviation industry in mid-April, with a total of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two quotas allocated to twenty-seven eligible companies. Regarding the first round of applications, over one thousand three hundred imported workers have come to work at Hong Kong IA to date. Under the drive of the government, AA Hong Kong will implement the Transport Subsidy for Local Frontline Airports starting from May this year. We will continue to listen to the views of employees and employees through the stakeholder consultation session established under the scheme and review the scheme in due course. To support the sustainable development of Hong Kong's maritime and port industry, the government promulgated the Action Plan on Maritime and Port Development Strategy in December last year, which formulates ten strategies and thirty-two action measures with a view to enhancing the long-term competitiveness of the industry as well as consolidating and strengthening Hong Kong's position as an international maritime center. In particular, to develop high-value-added maritime services, the government has introduced a series of tax concession measures for ship leasing, marine insurance, and shipping commercial principles over the past few years. We will commence studies on further enhancements within this year. Hong Kong's ship registration regime is widely recognized internationally. Hong Kong ranks fourth in the world in terms of gross tonnage and excels in its high-quality fleet. We plan to offer block registration incentive to attract ship owners to register ships in Hong Kong extensively. We will amend the regulations regarding this incentive by the end of this year to provide the, an outline of the incentive rules, eligibility criteria, and so on. The maritime industry also has vast market potential for green transformation. The Marine Department is planning to provide incentives for Hong Kong registered ships that have attained high ratings under the international standards on decarbonization set by the International Maritime Organization. In collaboration with the Environment and Ecology Bureau and other relevant departments, we are conducting a feasibility study on the provision of green meson bunkering for local and ocean-going vessels. We expect to publish an action plan for Hong Kong's development into a green maritime fuel bunkering center this year. For logistics, in order to realize the objective of developing Hong Kong into a sustainable international smart logistics hub, we promote, we promulgated the Action Plan on Modern Logistics Development in October last year. With the support of Hong Kong Logistics Development Council, we are now working with food team to implement the strategies and action measures in the action plan phases in collaboration with the reference stakeholders in the industry. Among others, we have announced a pilot subsidy scheme for third-party logistics service providers by doubling the subsidy ceiling for each enterprise to two million dollars and extending the scope of subsidy to application of ESG technology solutions in order to support Hong Kong's modern logistics industry development. Chairman, we are most grateful to members for their interest in transport and logistics affairs. My team and I will be pleased to answer questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lam. Twenty members would like to speak. We have ninety-plus minutes left, so for those who've pressed the button, they should have a chance. The list is Frankie Ye, Chen Xiu-hong, Gary Zheng, Peter Kun, Cha Xiaochong, Andrew Lam, Michael Chan, Tenka Pio, Connie Lam, Adori Kong, Lo Wei Kwok, Perry Yu, Dominic Lee, Donnie Su-Leng, Laing Tong Kock, Tong Yijie, Jeffrey Lam, and Yim Kong. First, Mr. Frankie Ye. Thank you. I have three questions. First, T L B two-three-three. I'd like to thank the government for introducing the Labor Importation Scheme for puppet-like buses and coach trade. But then, the driving habits of these, of these imported drivers is not quite the same, so there's a high failure rate for the driving test. But then, it takes a long time to wait again for another test. Now, we bring them to Hong Kong, we have to provide them with accommodation and, and so on, and while to wait to get another test, so the costs are too much. So with the Transport Department considering speeding up, consider speeding up the waiting time for these imported drivers. Second question, electric vehicles. Now, if that's type of approval, then EVs could go on to expressway. But then, for taxis, for some reason, only taxis have to apply for a permit. I wonder if you've left them out by mistake, so please remove this requirement because the taxi tray asks why they still have to wait for permits. Another question is on the T L B two-three-six, illegal carriage of passengers for reward. Now, enforcement cases only were thirty-three in two thousand twenty-three, only twenty-seven vehicles were impounded. So the passenger service trade is very disappointed with the enforcement effort. Now, the administration is ready to revise the legislation and you'll consult the reference sectors in the middle of the year. And your replies that the police welcomes complaints from, or reports from the public, and then the police force will follow up on these cases. But then, for now, the issue is if there's a complaint made, then the police will send a letter and ask the person, well, ask the driver who was driving a vehicle, and then the owner of the vehicle will say, well, I don't know who was driving, and then the case is closed, it's just a fine of three thousand dollars. So obviously, this is loophole in the law. Now, if you drive a car, you know that who has taken your car on a particular day to drive it unless you've reported the car is lost. So I think you need to plug this loophole. Three questions on two replies. Secretary. I'll invite the Commissioner for Transport to take the first and second questions. On targeting the illegal carriage of passengers for reward, we will continue to work on that. Now, in December last year, we amended the legislation to increase the penalty. So we'll continue to follow up on that. In fact, we are keeping in close liaison with the sector. Now, Mr. Ye mentions the legislation. We're looking at that. We'll see if there's room for us to do better. Is there a need to amend the legislation? Well, we are looking at that together with the police and the Transport Department. Now, Ms. Lee. On driving tests for imported drivers. Yes, we have made special arrangements to provide additional slots for imported drivers. And if they need to retake the test, we try to speed up the waiting time. Now, actually, the pass rate of driving tests for imported work drivers is seventy-five percent. As for the permit for electric taxis to go on expressways, we'll try to facilitate that, that transformation, so we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Now, O five-eight. I've asked them twice about whether the railways department will be set up. Now, the Northern Metropolis Railway Office was set up, and then the setting of the railways department was shelved. But then, they're thinking at the time is that there will be three hundred and seventy posts for this department. I asked how come in two thousand eleven initially, the plan was to create two hundred and seventy-seven posts, now it's gone up to three hundred and twelve. And then, I asked for the progress for the setting of the railways department, but then no timetable is given. And then, there's no mention of when the department may be set up. And then, in two thousand twenty-one, initially, the plan was to set up to create two hundred and seventy-seven posts, and then it was increased twice, and this year is to be increased, it's increased to three hundred and twenty, twenty-one posts. And the cost is, it's also gone up from above three hundred and six million dollars to three hundred and twenty million dollars. Now, you, you don't set, you keep delaying the setting of the railways department, then we're increasing the number of posts for this department. Can you explain why you're not setting up the department yet? And why is it that you keep proposing to increase the number of posts? Is there a timetable for setting up the railways department? Next is one's reply number one-six-six. Electric taxis, the latest progress. Now, at the end of February two thousand twenty-four, there are thirty-six licensed electric vehicles. In Hong Kong, we have over eighteen thousand taxis, so the percentage is just point two. And then, in two thousand twenty-three, there were just five electric taxis. Of course, it's progressive, if you consider that. But then, the target is that by end two thousand twenty-seven, there will be three thousand electric taxis, so we're still a long way from that. So what measures do you have in place to achieve that target? And are you confident in achieving that target? If you're not, then shouldn't you revise the target? Maybe set a midterm target, maybe by two thousand twenty-five, there will be fifteen hundred electric taxis. And then, there will also be corresponding measures to achieve that. So will you do that? Thank you.
Secretary, there are two parts to Mr. Chan's question. First, railway department, second, e-taxis. For e-taxis, I will ask Ms. Mabel Chan, Permanent Secretary, to address the question. Regarding railway department, we proposed this a few years ago. We want to consolidate the railway offices in the Highways Department and the Northern Metropolis Railway Branch in the Development Bureau. By creating this railways department, we want to improve our services. We do have some railway projects on the agenda. For the Northern Metropolis Railways Office, it was just established a year ago. And we're looking into the development of the railways department. For e-taxis, I will ask Ms. Mabel Chan to take that. Chairman, I wonder what conditions we need to have in place before railway department can be established? The Northern Metropolis Railways Office has been here for a year. What are you waiting before you create this railway department? For such kind of reorganization and creation of positions, we have to look at our current workload and the effectiveness of the creation of the railway department. We all are concerned about the creation of posts these days within the government's establishment. Ms. Chan.
I will reply to the question on e-taxis briefly. We're looking at the loan scheme and its effectiveness. I mean, the Dedicated One Hundred Loan Guarantee Scheme for e-taxis. We're looking into that. Charging e-taxis is a concern for us. The Transport Department has invited operators of taxis to create taxi fleets, and we have identified two pieces of land for the operators of taxi fleet to manage their taxis, and we will provide for chargers in those two pieces of government land. And we are working with manufacturers of electric vehicles on the mainland. I know that the operators are looking into those models currently, and the government will help them. Mr. Adrian Hall. I would like to follow up on question one A three regarding time varying tolls for the three road harbor crossings. I know that the traffic flow for the three road harbor crossings have been improved, which shows that the time varying toll scheme is very useful. Has the government looked into the traffic diversion situation with the other trunk roads? When the government replied to the question two O two, the administration says that the Lion Rock Tunnel is still, traffic flow is still two, twenty thousand vehicles higher than those of other tunnels. Will the government put in place time varying toll for Thailand Tunnel after they have retrieved the tunnel? Secretary, we have achieved some results with the time varying toll. Next month, perhaps, we will come to the lodge call to report on our progress. Mr. Ho asked about the Sha Tin Chunk Road. In May, we will be taking back the Thailand Tunnel. And we are looking into the fare or toll arrangement after taking back the tunnel. The departments and bureaus are working on that. Thailand Tunnel is not the same as the other road harbor crossings. For the three tunnels in Sha Tin, for Tai Lao Shan Tunnel, Tain's Current Tunnel, and Lion Rock Tunnel, there's quite some construction projects in Sha Tin. We have to complement our toll levels with those construction projects near the tunnels. Next, Mr. Li Changkan. Thank you, Chairman. Under the fourteen-five-year plan, Hong Kong has to become a logistics hub. I know that the passage, passenger throughput is only seventy percent of the pre-pandemic level. I would like to ask about T L B one and seven. Before the commissioning of the third runway, we are still like having manpower crunch, including manpower for maintenance and repair of aircraft. I know that you have this labor importation scheme. A lot of trades are still experiencing manpower crunch, and not a lot of people have applied for the labor importation scheme. And the trade is lacking, for example, air stewardess and so on. How will the government attract talents from other places so that the trade can have enough manpower to operate the airport? I would also like to ask about the training of pilots. The Aviation Academy has some courses, but they are very expensive, which cost about eighty, eight hundred thousand dollars. Will the government be able to subsidize these students and ask these students upon graduation, join the local trade? My third question, one hundred and ninety-six. We all know that the time varying toll scheme is very effective. When will you review the toll level for Minibus and other vehicles? Secretary, thank you. Regarding your first question on aviation industry, we do have a labor importation scheme for the aviation. We, six thousand three hundred applications were received. Some one thousand people have joined the industry, and we have approved of a quota last week for three thousand odd people. We've looked at the results of the first phase of the importation scheme. This is the first time the aviation trade have imported labor, so they may need time to get used to it. For the second phase, there are some two, twenty companies applying for importation of labor. Certain company have recruited some one hundred imported labor. We have approved of a quota last week. We will have to look at the progress. Second, regarding the Aviation Academy, we will see if we can provide for some scholarship for students, and we will look into that. About the time varying toll scheme for the road harbor crossings, I would like to thank Mr. Lee for his support of our scheme. The time varying toll was implemented only last December. And people need time to get used to the new arrangement, and there is seasonal factor in the traffic flow. So I think that we have to spend some time to look at the effectiveness of the scheme. In the middle of next year, we will come to the lodge call to report on the progress. Next, Mr. Chau Man Kwan, or Dr. Chau Man Kwan. I would like to ask about question seventy-six. About widening of the Taipo Highway Sha Tin Section. Whenever we pass by Sha Tin Town Center, the construction has always been underway. This construction project has been going on since I was young. The noise barriers have been put in place, I know. There is a social cost involved, including congestion of roads whenever we have construction projects. There are some unforeseeable factors that bring about challenges to certain construction projects. And the railway protection area is involved in the construction projects in Sha Tin. For T four, there is an elevated highway. Will extra cost be involved? What is the government's assessment on that? I would like to ask about question one A three, asked by Mr. Ho. The traffic flow for eastern harbor crossing and the harbor tunnel has been diverted to the western harbor crossing. The government can save about two hundred thousand, two hundred million dollars of cost. Apart from traffic flow, what is the change in the driver's habit? Are drivers actually changing their driving patterns because of the toll level? On the reduction of revenue of the government, because all the toll booths have been removed and the government don't have to hire that many people, how will the government make up for the revenue foregone because of the change of toll level? Will they put in place more advertisements, for example? Secretary, regarding the Taipo Road Sha Tin Section, as mentioned in our reply, it's a complicated project to repair roads in Town Center. It's a complicated project to repair roads in town center. There could be underground utilities that we have to cater for when we excavate certain section of the roads. For the Taipo Road Sha Tin Section. By quarter four this year, we expect that the widening project can be uh completed. So that the three lanes will be made available by then. We're confident in such a schedule. We always uh learn from our projects. The works department share their experience in. Each of their projects with other departments. And the experience that we learned from the construction projects will be. Very useful for the other projects that we put in place, for example, the T four project. Regarding the effectiveness of the. Time varying toll, in peak hours, the traffic flow dropped by some three percent. For the time slots before and after the peak slot, time slots, there's an increase of four percent. Which shows that. Some motorists have changed their driving patterns. Because of the change in toll level. Regarding the details of the time varying toll, we will report to the panel on transport later on. Regarding the drop in revenue from toll level, well, it amounts to some hundreds of millions of dollars. We have seen on costs in terms of staff salary. We will try to generate more revenue by. By soliciting for advert- advertisers. Thank you. Next, Mister Gary Chang.
T L B O O seven and two five O. Now, T L B O O seven mentions that um. Uh, after the free one-way systems in place, the six, the move, flight movements will be increased from sixty-nine to one oh two. That means we need to increase manpower, especially for air traffic control manpower. Now, uh, is, we told that it takes five to seven years to train a tra- air traffic controller. So that means you need time to plan for that. For air traffic controllers, they are civil servants. At the end of the day, the salary is paid by the airport authority. So that means it's um public money. So we need to start um recruiting and training staff early. Then in the reply says that we need to uh maintain civil growth of the civil service establishment. And that also applies to the Civil Aviation Department. Now, it takes five to seven years to train such stuff. And then the salary is paid by the airport authority, not the uh government. Uh, the same, so. Um, C A D is still going to freeze the establishment size. So how are we going to cope with the increased amounts with the commissioning of the free one-way system? So shouldn't the government take um, give special consideration to allow? The increase of the establishment for the air tra- port travel uh traffic controller grade? For T L B two five O is about um, uh, projects to replace systems. Now, many of this is uh, has to do with the replacement of ventilation system, lighting systems of thunder so on, and it costs substantially. Nineteen point four billion dollars in total. And then, uh, but then for other projects, um, you know, uh, um. Uh, and it, and the total cost is sort of forty-one point two billion dollars. Some of the projects are really expensive. For example, eighty-nine A, uh, the cost is seventy bill- million dollars without cost, there's cost overrun of over forty million dollars, so it's over a hundred million dollars. There are other projects with cost overrun of um, several tens of million dollars and so on. But my question is though. Why is it that uh, uh, the projects are put under here? Why is it that they don't have to go back to the Public Works Subcommittee and the Finance Committee for approval? Now, I've, I checked, uh, usually, uh, for this tunnel projects, um, lighting projects, they would first go to the panel. And then the uh, Public Works Subcommittee and then the Finance Committee, but now the practice has changed. Why is that? We are talking about over one ten billion, million dollars, so it's a major project, so the amount is enough for the project to be taken to the Finance Committee. But now it's put under this one lump sum, uh, so is that really the fiscal discipline you practice? Secretary. Maybe we'll take the first question and then the Commission for Transport will take the second question first. Permanent Secretary, Miss May Bu Chen. Thank you, Mister Zhang. On the airport tra- uh, air traffic controller. Now, uh, the free one-way systems will be commissioned at the end of this year, so in terms of um. Um, flight movements, um, and ultimately, it will be increased from sixty-nine to a hundred and two flights per hour. The Civil Aviation Department will plan a staff requirement on that basis. I understand that um, the C A D is trying to. Do more recruitments each year instead of one recruitment exercise, there are now two in a year. Because they need to take into account the time needed to train the staff. Uh, now, of course, we need to follow the government's requirement to control the establishment size. Uh, but Mister Zhang needs not be too worried. We'll look at the overall establishment size. If necessary, we will redeploy internal resources. And also, we will consider whether it's possible to reduce manpower in other areas, say through automation. Commissioner, T L B two five O. Now, the increase in funding is because there's a new area to be added to the project on the bit, on the recommendations of the E M S D. We will still go to the Finance Committee uh, to uh, consider the project. So there is this approval mechanism by Leshco still. Referent Peter Kuhn, uh, T L B one two six. Oh, that's um, um, single site multiple user is used for uh, logistics purpose with multi-story. Storage and so on. And now during COVID, it was turned into a makeshift hospital or community isolation facilities. And then, uh, this is also place where uniformed um youth groups are trained in the drills and so on and so on. So um, this is the use of this site now. So for how long would that be used for in future? Will you still be? Um, using the site for logistics center in future with storage and so on? Yes, the site currently is now used by uniformed groups. It's a temporary use. Uh, later on, the site will be returned to us for logistic purpose. So it will eventually be used for mo- logistics purpose. Next, Mister Chow Su Chong. I'd like to follow up on my own question, reply number T L B O six four. Uh, I have a number of questions on this reply. First of all, uh, the secretary told us there are now about thirteen hundred workers imported. To work at the airport. The front, frontline trade unions um told me that uh. Now, um, these are workers handling baggage uh, uh, in the basement or they drive reference vehicles and so on. But actually, many of them cannot speak Cantonese. So the, they have difficulties communicating with local workers. Uh, frontline, uh, so the frontline workers unions suggested, yeah, maybe the. A airport authority could um work on a set of um hand signs uh, uh, for, for easier communication. So the question is. How can the airport and authority ensure that imported and local workers could work together properly? Uh, because we don't want to see any industrial accidents as a result of miscommunication. Now, um, the frontline trade unions told us that um, for local workers, they now have a. Less overtime work. That means their pay is reduced as a result. And then, uh, when um, there are people who want to apply for post, they're told by the company, though these posts are no longer available. But then, at the same time, they've learned that the company is applying for in- imported workers. And then, um, there also, there are outsourced companies in the past. If someone wants to join these companies, they will accept these applications. But now, the company is no longer accepting applications uh, from uh, local workers and outsourced companies to join the principal. So shall we um, you know, stop the uh, you know, pause the labor importation scheme for now to see if there are local workers who will take up the post? And the other question is on the Free R S. Now, uh, the previous assessment that there may be near for over a hundred thousand. People to work on the airport island. Um, now the F R S will be commissioned at the end of the year, so how are you going to um? Deal with the manpower resources? My thinking, of course, is for you to train local workers. So is there any plan to train local workers? More importantly, how do we uh, uh, bring people to work on the airport island? Uh, because of the accessibility issue? Will the secretary take both measures to address the accessibility issue? Thank you for the question. Now, um, about communication between local and imported wa- workers. You know, in Hong Kong, we have, say, Southeast Asians. In the community. So even if there are no imported workers, um, then there's always the issue of communication. Among people speaking different languages. I, I think Hong Kong people are used to that. Yes, I've heard about this issue and I uh. Know that the, the airport is, uh, authority is dealing with that. Maybe there could be guidelines on hand signs. I uh, understand um, the uh. Airport authority is following up on that. Now, another issue is that uh, because they're imported workers, so. There are fewer job opportunities for local workers. Now, but, but we always give priority to local workers. Now, there are uh, some vacancies uh, taken up by imported workers, but for some other vacancies, the company has to try its best to recruit local workers first. Now, we can expect the workload to become increasingly heavy at the airport. So with, there will be stronger manpower demands and so local workers will have plenty of job opportunities in the airport. Now, F R S is to be commissioned at the end of the year. The airport authority is now um coordinating a manpower projection. Or estimate. Now, in the past few years, the airport authority has been actively uh, exploring the use of technologies to um, so it can rely less on manpower. And this will certainly be taken into account in their mental projection. As for making jobs at the airport more appealing to local workers. In the past few years, we've been um implementing various measures to bring frontline workers. To the airport island. And in our design of the labor importation scheme, uh, there is also. A scheme on transport allowance and that will come into place in May.
Next, Mister Andrew Lam. I would like to ask about T L B one nine two about smart um road management system. In the reply, the government gave recognition to the system. How successful does the government think that the time varying toll system is? And is there any? Weakness to the system? Is there any issues that we have to work on? Before we can put in place this smart motorway management system. The government said that they will consider introducing the M S M M S, Smart Motorway Management System. Why is the government not confident enough um, in introducing the system right now? What is the concern? At the second part of the government reply, the government said that. They will have to wait until the assessments have been done before they can. Consider the necessity and priority of constructing new roads or main routes. We have dedicated much resources on the construction of roads. I think that we can make use of the uh, management system to improve. The traffic flow and the situation. I wonder what figures or data we need before we can put in place such a S M M S. Secretary, thank you. The S M M S is a rather broad term. Time varying toll is a kind of. Systems. Under this smart motorway management system idea. This kind of system will enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of usage of roads. In other countries, they have done some tests on this kind of smart management system and they are operating such a system. Can we copy directly from other countries? I think that we have to look at our own situation. Our difference. Compared to other countries is that we have a lot of vehicles, our roads are narrower. So it's necessary for us to test the system before we can introduce it to Hong Kong. Such kind of test is necessary. We need the technology to be mature enough for us to put in place such a system, otherwise. This system may not be. As successful or it may fail when we introduce it in Hong Kong or to Hong Kong. So we have to be careful. And we have to make assessment. Before we introduce any new technology. To improve our traffic system. Next, Mister Michael Tian. I would like to ask about one one, question one one four, trunk road T four. Or one one two. Lot of people think that the cost of trunk road T four is expensive. The government said that they will put in place mitigation measures after taking into consideration the views of the residents. They don't think that the Sha Tin bypass can replace trunk road T four. So there is no reason for me to object to the project. The government said that the peak hours for Taipo Road Sha Tin Tank Road, the V C ratio is at zero point eight nine. Or zero point nine nine. That is why the government have to put in place trunk road T four. I think that the government should let us know about the timetable for.
the trunk road T four along with other projects in Sha Tin. I said that before I have such a timetable, I will abstain from road, um, from voting. The government said that, uh, the V C ratio of one point two would be the limit. But then the V C ratio of one point two will be achieved in two thousand and forty seven only. But the government did not openly say that. I would like to also ask about T B, T L B one one four, the establishment of railway department. In two thousand and eighteen, the Sha Tin Central Link, um, problem, I proposed the establishment of the railways department back then. The government have to, the Transport and Logistics Bureau have to work on a number of projects. The government said that some three hundred and twenty-one posts will be created and it cost about one hundred and fifty million dollars. A lot of people would think that the hundred and fifty million dollars is the extra cost for the establishment of railway department. But that's not the case because you have some fourteen railways projects. Even without the a railway department, you will still have to incur such a cost. The real extra cost is less than ten million dollars per year. You need perhaps a new director of railways and a deputy. That would cost less than ten million dollars a year. So I don't think that the figure is true. For question one one three, with future development of railways department, uh, railways in Hong Kong, for central railway, I don't think that alignment is reasonable. You have to spend some twenty million dollars in excess. The alignment is not reasonable. The alignment should go through Chuen Wan. Because otherwise, people will have to wait for a long time before they can get on board. I wonder how many people would be, um, transiting in Kaolin Tong. I think that the government should give us the information. For us, the round table, we've been asking for the fifth cross harbor railways. The government said that they will postpone the Kaoi Chau artificial island projects by two to three years. Does that mean that the next cross harbor railways will not be put in place in ten years? For the five hundred thousand population that will be moved into the new territories, they will not be able to enjoy fast, um, journey to the Hong Kong island. Because of the time limit, I will ask the secretary to answer your first question for the rest of the questions. They will give you a written reply. Thank you. For the railway department question, we have already addressed that earlier regarding the central link, it now goes from, um, Camtin to Kaolin Tong. I think that the, um, route will, Chairman, can you ask them to reply on the cross harbor link or railway? For the, um, Kaoi Chau artificial island project, um, the environmental impact assessment is underway. The Department Bureau said that they will start the construction of it within this term of the government's tenure. So will the cross harbor railway be commissioned eh by twenty thirty six? As you know that for the, um, major transport development strategy blueprint, there is such a plan in place. Next, Mr. Tang Kapiu. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask about a smart and green mass transit system for the East Kaolin. The government will seek funding from the Legco early this year for the early stage of construction, including investigation of site and so on. They're confident that by twenty twenty-six and twenty-seven, the construction will start. You said that you need some two hundred million dollars for the early stage of the project. Do you have estimates on the total cost of the construction? Now, I know that the government is determined in taking forward this smart and green mass transit system. The residents have some comments regarding the alignment. Now, the mass transit system will go from Yaotong to Lam Tin. Will the government create a station there at Lam Tin? For Wantai Sin residents, they have some suggestions. They want the system to go from Choi Hong to Fu Shan Estate in Chiwan San. Is there any room for adjustment of the alignment and what is the estimated total cost of the project? For the time varying toll system has been put in place for quite some time for peak hours. The traffic flow has dropped by some two percent compared to the time before the implementation of the scheme. There will be a growth in terms of, uh, vehicles and we have a area one three seven in Chongkun O and the artificial islands will not be established in quite some years. Will you create the fourth cross harbor railways starting from Suzai Wan? Or the fourth cross harbor tunnel, eh, starting from Suzai Wan to, um, Kaolin? Because the drop in traffic flow is not significant after putting in place the time varying toll, secretary. Regarding the smart and green mass transit system in East Kaolin, we will seek funding from the Legco very soon. We have received some comments from the community and the district councils. They are asking us to cover Chiwan Shan. But there are some difficulties in that after obtaining funding from the Legislative Council, we undertake that we will look into the comments from the community. Because we need, do need to address their needs and comments. Regarding the cost of the projects, we don't have that number yet because we have not done any detailed survey or investigation. The smart and green mass transit system is not a kind of heavy rail. The variation in cost would be quite substantial, I believe. So at this stage, I will not be able to give you the figure. For the time varying toll scheme, I would like to thank the member for his support. For the cross harbor tunnel between Suzai Wan and Kaolin, we have done some study. We may have to demolish some buildings before we can build a cross harbor tunnel between Suzai Wan and Kaolin. So it's not quite feasible. We will see if there is any room for, uh, improving the cross harbor traffic between the two sides of the Victoria Harbour. Miss Lamso White, I would like to ask about T L B forty-eight about trunk road T four issue. The government is trying to apply for funding from the Legco to take forward the trunk road T four. The cost is some seven billion dollars. I went to Man Shan in the eastern holidays. A lot of Man Shan residents actually support the project, but the cost of the project is so high. A lot of people are objected, were object to the project. Does the administration have any ways to lower the cost of the construction of T four because we have fiscal deficit? For the widening of T six, construction of row P six, does the government have any ways to lower the cost? And when will the shut-in bypass be completed? Why do you not allocate more resources to expedite the progress of the study of, um, T six bridge? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, both, the, your questions are mostly about T four. Uh, we fully aware of members', um, interests or in T four. Now, the government, you know, has been trying hard to respond to the aspirations of residents since the start of the planning of the project. And we try to include various facilitating measures and that's why now we have this advanced, um, version of the project. Uh, we are still trying to explain the latest, um, project to residents and also to listen to their views if, uh, uh, possible, we will try to cooperate the views of members and residents. Now, on the cost of the project, in terms of the scale of the project, we have to, of course, consider the unit cost of the project. And we have, um, expect team working, uh, to work on that. Compared to similar projects, the unit cost is also similar for this project. Oh, of course, we will continue to look at the cost issue in the light of members' concerns. Sha Tin bypass is, um, in main trunk road, uh, um, linking the south and the north, um, with the development of the northern metropolis. And for now, uh, we need to widen type of road and, uh, increase the traffic capacity for Sha Tin. Before we go back to the finance committee, we will include all the details in the paper. Thank you. Would you say a bit more on P six, uh, T six? The, uh, Miss Lam asked you about the, um, uh, purpose of T six. That is the, um, widening of, uh, the Tolo Harbor Road and so on, uh, and the Tate Scott Tunnel. Well, yes, well, Tolo, uh, Ha- 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 Road, um, there, there's two spot. One is T four, the other is T six. T six links up, uh, Tolo Harbor Road and Man Shan. That's called the T six bridge. Now, with the, um, development of the Science Park, uh, we're seeing traffic congestion. So we're coming up with a T six solution that could address the issue uh, of traffic congestion. So that's something we're working on now. Next, Mr. Owen Kong. Uh, the first is reply oh one nine. Um, you know, improvement of streetscape and so on. Now, I see that in the past year or two, uh, there's vegetation blocking the sideline on highways. Uh, it's even the case, uh, on local roads, I often get complaints from residents. And then on both sides of the highway, often where I see refuse, uh, uh, um, like styrofoam boxes for, um, vegetables. I've called the police twice because this boxes block the road. It imposes serious, uh, risk to, um, drivers. And then on the eastern harbor crossing, often see, uh, plastic bags lying around. One time, the, uh, uh, plastic bag actually covered my, um, uh, left side rear mirror. So I had to, uh, stop after the western harbor crossing, uh, ton, uh, tow area before I could, uh, uh, remove the plastic bag. So when I was, um, driving along before that, I could only rely on my right side rear view mirror, uh, side mirror. So this just happens more than once. So my, I'm, that's why I've asked this question. I want to know how much government spends on, um, cleaning the highways. Now, uh, in the reply, it said that, uh, one hundred and forty-six million dollars will be set aside for the highways department to improve streetscape. And in the reply, you say that you have engaged four contractors for expressways. Uh, there's cleaning ones every day. As for roadside vegetation, is only, um, ha- um, um, cleans, uh, uh, dealt with once every six months. But if you clean high, for expressways once every day, I don't see that to be the case. For example, the C Q center, uh, there's a Ben going to western harbor crossing. I, uh, took a video. Uh, for three days, I saw, um, large refuse items on the street. So how is it that you are um, cleaning the mo- expressway once every day? So how do you actually monitor the work of contractors to make sure they properly cleanse, uh, expressways and roads? And sometimes, uh, we get complaints from the public that the trees are blocking the sideline of motorists. So apart from calling one eight two three, are there, is there another effective way for you to get views from the public? And next quickly on, uh, reply number one four two, a question asked by Mr. Ben Chen on water taxis. I see that water taxis more when, um, you know, uh, window dressing. Now, there are always signs to say there are water taxis. When we get to those point, there, there, no water taxis for the Chong Central to Chim Sa Chui line, line, there are just three hundred people taking the water taxi. You say this is, um, um, actually for tourists, but at the same time, it's also a kind of transport. So how can you, uh, properly publicize, uh, water taxis to you, to boost the usage rate, the patronage rate? The first question. Well, um, um, Director of Highways, yes, we'll take the question. Mr. Yao, please. Thank you for the question, Ms. Kong. Now, we pay particular attention to expressways, uh, uh, when it comes to cleaning because it's also a road safety issue. We have a performance pledge for expressways. If we receive any complaint, we must uh, arrive at the scene within one and a half hours. Uh, that's ninety-seven percent. And within five hours, uh, that, that, um, ninety-five percent of the cases we must have cleaned up. And so we're usually able to achieve that. But then, of course, after we, uh, remove, uh, the, the, uh, obstruction, then may some, uh, you know, there may be other items, um, um, you know, being left on the street. And then if, uh, it affects safety, for example, trees are blocking sideline, or maybe there are holes on the road surface, we will immediately repair the road surface. Now, uh, uh, can we further improve the, um, monitoring or surveillance system? Well, we're doing digit, uh, digitization of the system. We're using artificial, uh, intelligence. Um, there will be car cameras taking images and then, uh, the images could be analyzed and then there could be quick follow-up. And then we, and that we could also better, uh, monitor the con- uh, performance of contractors. Water taxis. Thank you. Um, now, uh, I worked very hard with contractors to, um, introduce water taxis, but at that time, there was a pandemic. So it affected the plans of, um, the contractor. Now, apart from being a tourist attraction, we want water taxis to be a form of transport. Now, S L government wants to promote tourism, to develop the economy. So we work, um, with the contractors, uh, and the tourism board to, uh, step up publicity on water ser- the taxis. Apart from putting up more signs on, uh, on the street, uh, maybe there could be, um, mobile app. Uh, and there could be the discounts to say, um, it could be used for watching the fireworks and, uh, admiring the, uh, Victoria Harbour and so on. Now, the, uh, C D D has helped us, uh, to, um, put more landing steps on the two sides of the Victoria Harbour. So we could, um, step up publicity. So we could um step up publicity and certainly, thank you. Doctor Loai Kwok. I'd like to follow up on my own questions, reply number T L B oh nine two. Railway Development Strategy twenty fourteen. Now, many uh some of the projects in this strategy are seeing much delay. So I want to know what the progress is. Now, in the reply, the department uh says that for various projects under Railway Development Strategy twenty fourteen and implement time ta- implementation timetable is um has been formulated and they will try to speed up the work. Uh because um there is need to um support increase in population at various spots. That's why these railway projects are very important for the people. So I appreciate that. Uh I hope you really will catch up uh um with the lost progress because there's been much delay really, so to work quickly. I know that say for the East Colin Line, it takes you much time to consider it because of issue, various issues. And then for the Southern Island Line West, you may have to reconsider whether it should uh be a heavy rail. Now, of course, we've seen much advancement in railway technologies, maybe that will help to address the issues we face. Now, on railway development and road improvement works, the sector is rather concerned. Again, they will either see um, you know, um a concentration of projects or there's no, there are no projects to work on. We people, the sector's been waiting for a long time for the various railway projects under the R D S twenty fourteen. And now all of a sudden, you're going to roll out all these projects. Uh on top of that, many other new projects have been proposed. In the blueprints published, we see that um for some years, we'll see, you know, substantial volume of works. And and so uh you need to talk to the sector so that you could spread out the projects and there will be continuous work for the sector. Thank, thank you. Secretary. Railway Development Strategy twenty fourteen. It's true, there's delay in some of the projects, but we're trying to ca- uh catch up now to make up for lost time. For East Colin Line and the Southern Island Line West, um now heavy rail may not be the most effective. So we're trying to see if there is lighter rail system that will work better. You know, something of a medium scale. In the railway blueprint, we have taken into consideration the impact on the local communities. We've also considered the uh uh capacity of the reference uh sectors in um undertaking the work. So we need to consider the issue together with the Development Bureau. Now, the construction industry takes up um transport uh or um projects as well as other infrastructure projects. So um we will have to consider the capacity of the construction sector together with the Development Bureau and the sector. We'll see if there's need for more training or if there's a need to import workers. So we, the three parties will work together on that, thank you.
Next, Mister Yu Pak Leng. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask about T L B one three zero and T L B two four one. I'm concerned about the competitiveness of the Hong Kong International Airport. In the reply of the T L B, it is mentioned they, an independent international consultancy assess the levels of airport charges over the world, and they told us that the Hong Kong I A's overall airport charges ranked in the meat ter- meat tier. But that is not the reality because a lot of airport operators told me that the Hong Kong I A airport charges is very high for um fees of counter services, parking, along with construction costs of passengers, fuel charges. All of these fees are of quite high level. We all think that the airport charges of Hong Kong I A is expensive. Does the government actually review the costs themselves? Or do they only engage the independent international consultancy to assess the charge level? I hope that the government can give us a table in terms of the rank um of airport charges among the fifty major airports over the world. Regarding T L B two four one, I'm concerned about the traffic flow of the Chim Sa Choi East waterfront promenade near K eleven Museum. Last week, we conducted a site visit at the Wan Chai waterfront promenade to assess the traffic flow. We have to address the issues with the traffic flow at Wan Chai as well. There is issues with, for example, water taxis at Chim Sa Choi. The landing facilities are insufficient there. We need landing facilities for water taxis and pleasure vessels. So we have to improve the landing steps there. Apart from that, perhaps we have to work with the police to improve the traffic flow at Wan Chai and the area outside K eleven Museum to see if we can um step up enforcement. Secretary, please address the second question. And for this first question, you just have to tell us if you can provide supplementary information.
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the airport charges, we look at the level of it along with the airport authority. We can supplement with additional information in terms of how we compare with other um airports in terms of airport charges. I would defer to the Commissioner for Transport to take the question um on the issues with Chim Sa Choi. We know that Chim Sa Choi is a very popular tourist spot. We've looked at the landing steps at Chim Sa Choi with the member. We know that landing number one is the most popular one. The usage rate is high, but in an orderly manner. We have landing number two and number five as well. As mentioned in the site visit, we will look into the diversion of it. The landing steps are for picking up and setting up for the parking spaces are not for long-term parking, but for picking up and um disembarking of passengers. Mister Dennis Lang, thank you. I would like to ask about T L B one nine seven on the electronic moving devices. The government only issued some twenty-one P A P Cs and only one hundred and eighty participants participated in the power assisted pedal cycles scheme provided by local bike. Why are there so few people participating in the trial scheme? According to the paper, the government rolled out the scheme in March last year and it has been in place for a year. After the scheme has been completed, what is your plan? Why is our progress so slow in promoting this kind of power assisted pedal cycles or electric mobility devices? I believe that the member is talking about the trial scheme outside or at Pak Se Kok. I would defer to the Commissioner of Transport to talk about the situation. The pilot or trial scheme is done on a pilot basis. The bicycles are provided for by the operator. So we don't have that many uh bicycles under the trial scheme. We are reviewing the results of the scheme. We looked at the feedback from the participants of the scheme. And we also looked into how the software uh of the system can complement with the use of the devices. As the trial scheme has just been completed, we will look into the results of the review of the scheme. As the scale of the trial scheme is so small, I don't think that the assessment can be done very effectively. You said that you have not received any complaints, but actually only one hundred and eighty participants participated in the scheme and only some twenty bicycles were involved. Of course, there would not be any complaints. Why do we not um broaden the scope of the trial scheme? Thank you. For this shared use concept of electric mobility devices, it is a rather new concept. We will look into how we can improve it in the future. Next, Mister Dennis Lang. I would like to ask about T L B zero one three and zero one eight about the Universal Accessibility Program. There are still nine outstanding projects because that were delayed because of unsatisfactory performance of the contractor. I hope that the government will expedite uh efficiency and improve effectiveness of the programs. The government said that the performance of the contractors are unsatisfactory and thus a rather uh lenient kind of term that they use. If that's just unsatisfactory, they wouldn't have to refer the case to the D O J. I hope that the government can condemn these uh underperforming perform um contractors so that they actually take their work there um seriously. Also, I wonder if there is any penalty that is handed down on these um underperforming contractors and if they will be barred from participating in future government projects. I would also like to ask about Central Rail Link. The government said that is Central Rail Link will only be commissioned by twenty thirty-nine. The suggestions was first appeared in two thousand and ten, but the rail link will only be commissioned fifteen years later. If it takes so long, how will the residence life be improved? Regarding the um southern extension of Chiang Kwan O Line, the population intake will happen in twenty thirty, but the southern extension will only be commissioned in twenty thirty-four, thirty-six. As mentioned by Mister Tang Kap Yew, will the government extend the Chiang Kwan O southern extension to the Hong Kong Island? If there is not enough traffic or transport facilities, then it will make life of residents very difficult. I would also like to ask about T L B zero nineteen and zero thirty-two. I'm concerned about the cleansing of expressways. The government said that there are four contractors that are working on cleansing. All motorists know that the situation have not been improved as the contractors make use of new technology to monitor the conditions of the road. Will the government put the images of the roads onto the internet so that we can monitor the work of the contractors? I hope that the government will find ways to improve their work and make our expressways cleaner. I would also like to ask about the parking of bicycles. Some of them are parked on the foot bridges. The police did not take enforcement action and the highways department did not cater to the problem. With so many bicycle parked on the footbridge, passengers or pedestrians are affected. If you've put four questions, I will regarding the um question put by Miss Dorian Kong, uh the government has already addressed, perhaps the government can take the question on the Central Rail Link and the bicycles issues. Secretary, regarding Central Rail Link, as I've mentioned, the link will complement with the development of the northern metropolis. For the Chiang Kwan O Line southern extension, the commissioning of the southern line will complement with that of the timetable of population intake. As for the bicycle issues, we will follow up on that with Mister Ling and we will also talk to the police about the issue. Thank you. Mister Yao, Director of Highways, can you talk about the Universal Accessibility Program? Thank you, Mister Len. I think that you're referring to uh one of our contractors that is, that has unsatisfactory performance on the construction of um projects under U A P. We do have some penalty system. We will issue warning letters and adverse reports. But after issuing these letters and reports, the contractors' performance did not improve. That is why we took back all the projects and we issued another round of tender for these projects. Hopefully, the works can commence in mid twenty twenty-four again. We can ask the contractors that have unsatisfactory performance for the funding that we allocate to them back. We do have a register of underperforming contractors and these contractors with unsatisfactory performance will have a lower point when they bid for another government projects. Perhaps the government can um submit a written reply on the rest of the quest- um questions. Mister Leitong Kwak, I live in Taipu. This meeting started at eight thirty A M and I had to wake up very early because the Taipu Road shutting section and the road at Science Park were congested. I would like to ask about T L B zero four eight. You have given us a long reply, but you did not give us any numbers upon widening of the Taipu Road's shutting section. And how will the traffic flow improve? After widening Taipu Road shutting section, that's my first question. Second, T L B zero two four regarding village lighting program. The government said that they will um allocate quotas having considered the resources that they have. According to your figures, the quotas approved are quite steady over the years. But some people living in the villages are seeing that the construction of village lights is slow.
Is it because you keep the number stable because you don't have much resources? My second question on this village lighting program, the funding allocation went from nine million dollars two years ago to nineteen point three million dollars last year. But the number of new village lights have not surged over the past four years. Why is that the case?
Three questions there. Secretary, thank you, Mister Li. Your second question on village lighting, I'll ask the Director of Highways to take that. On T four, now in the paper, we explain after twenty forty-one, the road junction, the road section there at Taipu Road should be enough to cope with traffic volume. And as I explained earlier, before we go to the Finance Committee, we will include more information in the paper. So members could better see the functions of T four. Mister Yao, thank you. On village lighting, well, we actually have a village lighting program. And so we are responsible for installing the lights and the district offices will collect and coordinate applications from various districts. They will prioritize the applications, and there's a quota system. Now, sometimes it may take longer to install village light because there's no power supply. Now we have, there are now solar-powered streetlights because now our progress may be affected if there's no power supply. So with solar-powered lights, and we will be able to speed up our project. At the same time, we're able to save energy. Thank you. Mister Tony J, thank you. T L B oh three two, two two six, and two two, and two five one. Now, three, oh three two is about cleansing of roads in particular. Expressways, my members have expressed concern there. If I may clarify on the reply, reply number two, reply paragraph two, it says that you will clean expressways once every day. It seems good. And then in paragraph three of the reply, it said that you have mechanical street sweepers to sweep and remove rubbish, pick up rubbish on the roads on both sides of the high-speed roads. Now, so you clean cleanse the highway every day, but then you only remove or pick up rubbish regularly. So why, how, if you don't pick up rubbish, that's not cleaning really. And then next, two two six, on expressway, heavy vehicles may speed, and they go beyond the speed limit of seventy kilometers per hour. And the reply says that there is some surveillance camera to detect if it's a heavy vehicle or not. I think that's good. Now we keep building more roads. So are you deploying more resources to increase such facilities? Because definitely you need more facilities. And then T L B two five one, it is the government's target to have three thousand electric taxis by twenty thirty-one. But so far, there are just thirty-six electric taxis that have been licensed. Now for the dedicated one hundred percent loan scheme, there are just five applications, that is a dedicated hundred percent loan guarantee scheme for a battery electric taxis. And only five applications and only four approved. I'm worried the government may be you know, giving out resources indiscriminately. Why is the progress so poor and you think, and you say it's satisfactory? Thank you. On expressways, every day we do inspections. If we see any items obstructing the road that may lead to road safety concerns, we will act on those items at once. And so the performance catch is to remove these items hundred percent in eight hours. And there's also day-to-day cleaning. Day-to-day cleaning may have nothing to do with road safety, but there's need for inspection every day. And then in the reply, there's mention of roadside facilities or road facilities such as footbridges, bridges, and other building structures. There is a cleaning once every six months. Heavy vehicles speeding. Permanent Secretary, on, I would like to respond to the second and third questions of Mister Tony J. On monitoring vehicle speed, well, this is something we take very seriously because we want to enhance road safety. So we need to monitor traffic flow. Now, when we have a strategic or trunk roads and so on, we would like to install facilities there. So thank you for your support. On electric taxis, just now I responded to members' questions. Certainly, we won't be deploy resources indiscriminately. Now for electric taxis, one important issue is about charging. When we invite applications for taxi fleet licenses, we will inform the applicants that we have identified two sites where there could be management of taxi fees, repair maintenance of taxi fees, as well as the provision of charging facilities. As for the dedicated one hundred percent loan guarantee scheme, we know contractors may take some time to get prepared. So we talked to the sector to see how they could benefit from the scheme. Mister Jeffrey Lam, T L B oh nine three. I support the airport authorities' effort to turn Hong Kong into an airport city. Now, definitely, we, Hong Kong is a bridgehead, and we are a treasure because we have the best geographical location. But then the development blueprint of the airport should not just be limited to hardware. We need long-haul flights. It's important to maintain our position as an international aviation hub. And so the number of long-haul routes is more important than the capacity of airport is, is not, doesn't come from me. It comes from a half report. Now, in the past, if there are routes with certain places, then there will be more exchanges. It's always the case. I visited the Middle East in the past year. I've been to Dubai and other places apart from Dubai. Actually, we do not have direct flights to other places in the Middle East. It's just an eight-hour flight, but it becomes a fourteen-hour trip because we need to transfer somewhere. That's why we've always asked the S O government to start more direct routes with Belt and Road countries. But then our home carrier has been acting so slowly. It's only been announced recently that in the fourth quarter, there will be a direct flight between Hong Kong and Riyadh. But in Guangzhou, they have always had direct flights to Middle East places. Even Shenzhen is considering direct flights with Middle East places. But in Hong Kong, we're only starting another direct route at the end of the year. So we are lagging so much behind when we used to always take the lead. You know, in, even if it's a space of six months, we're losing out on huge opportunities. So the government needs to do more. The government needs to consider what it can do to push the home carrier to operate more direct routes. Because without direct routes, they will lose out much economically. Secretary, thank you. Now, we all care very much about the development of our airport and our aviation industry. Our aviation recovery was slower than many other places after the pandemic. I totally share Mister Lam's point. So how can we recover at least to the pre-democratic level? Well, there are several options for the busy routes and for Belt and Road countries, not just the Middle East. It's also North Africa, Central Europe, and so on. So how can we see the resumption of flights or the start of new direct services? Of course, this is a matter for airliners. At the same time, we need to work together with the airport authority to encourage overseas or foreign airliners to start more routes. Now, I want to talk about our home carrier. I'm not talking about overseas airliners. You know, our home carrier needs to take care of the needs of local passengers. Secretary, please be brief because another member wishes to ask question. I'll only give him three minutes because we need to switch to the next session. So, Secretary, please. Apart from a local carrier, for overseas carriers, we're also working with them so that we could have a much wider network covering more routes. Mister Yim, I'll give you three minutes. If the secretary is not able to take, give you a reply, then I'll ask for a written reply. I'd like to ask about reply number oh four five is my question. Now, we've seen a substantial drop in container throughput in Hong Kong. Can you look at the practices of other major ports? The government could give some resources to do a projection of container throughput, and then you can set targets, annual targets. And on that basis, the industry could be urged to make improvements. Now, with container throughput, that's a way for us, for the sector to assess the future and prospects. So it's very important. So it's not a matter of whether we will set such an index, but rather whether the government is willing to do so. Now, in particular, when we see substantial drop in container throughput, that we need to take a proactive approach. Container throughput index is for projection, is also a target for devising action plans. It's like with tourism, when visitors, the number of visitors may vary due to various unforeseen factors. Still, the government would do a projection on arrivals and set a target. Now for container terminals, they probably will do, the both of directors probably do their own projections. So why is it the government can't do also a projection on container throughput? Secretary. Well, in the reply, we kept explaining the container throughput of a port depends very much on international circumstances. For example, the Red Sea issue. There were phantom hot cores of vessels. So it's not really appropriate for us to do projection every year. What is important is that we enhance the competitiveness of our ports. So we are, that's why we're working in the direction of green and smart ports. And we are working with the sector on that. Thank you. Mister Yim, are you happy with your reply? I am not at all happy. Because then every time is that at the end of the year, you will see ten or percent drop or so of a container throughput. If you could have first done a projection at the beginning of the year, there would be time for the sector to make improvements and catch up on the target. So I hope the government will take on board the suggestion of the sector. Okay, that's the end of this session. The next session will start at twenty fifty-five. Thank you.